Okay, we're good to go. Thank you.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, if you're prepared to report out of closed session, you can go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Emeryville City Council and the Mesa Board met in closed session on the items listed on the closed session agenda regarding item 5.1.1 on a motion by the mayor, seconded by the vice mayor in a three to two vote. The council gave direction to its agency negotiators regarding item 5.1.2. An update was provided and direction was given. Regarding item 5.1.3, an update was provided and direction was given. Regarding item 6.1.1, an update was provided. And regarding item 6.2.1, an update was provided and direction was given. And I will pass the baton on to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. For item 6.3.1, there was no reportable action. And the time is 7:45 PM. Apologies for running late, everyone, but we will now adjourn this meeting. And I will await the city clerk to let me know when she is ready to begin the next one.
Okay, ready to begin the Mesa.
Okay. Oh, is it Mesa first?
Yes.
I apologize. I had the wrong one up. The time is 7:46 PM. I am calling to order the City of Emeryville Management of Emeryville Services Authority Special Meeting. And bear with me while I scroll. And please bear with me while I read these introductory remarks. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at emeryville.org and clicking on Council Agendas and Videos. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. At this time, I will turn to the clerk and ask for the roll to be called.
Councilmember Bowers.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Pats.
Here.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here. And do I have a motion and a second for approval of the final agenda?
No moves.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Medina, a second by Vice Mayor Donahue. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. Are there any ex parte communications to report for this Mesa meeting? No, seeing none. Now's the time for public comment. And I'll remind everyone that this is the management services meeting. So if there are any public comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, you should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. And I will check in with the clerk to see if any electronic comments have been submitted.
I see none at this time.
And no raised hands?
And no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I will close public comment. It moves us to our single action item, item 6.1. I don't believe that we need a presentation on this, so I will check in with my colleagues to see if there are any clarifying questions. Nope, no clarifying questions. And I will look to see if there are any public comment electronic submissions from our city clerk on item 6.1.
No, no online comment cards and no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I'll close this section of public comment, and I'll entertain a motion.
No moves.
Second.
I have a motion for Member Medina, a second by Member Pats. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And it is 7:50 PM, and I adjourn this meeting. So Sherri, let me know when you're ready for the next meeting.
Ready.
All right, the time is 7:50. And I'm calling to order the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency meeting. Do I need to read the introductory remarks again?
No, I think we're good on that and the roll call as well.
Okay, very good. So we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
I move approval of the final agenda.
Oh, second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Donahue and a second by Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina. Councilmember Pat.
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. That moves us to the public comment portion of the agenda. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand.
No comments received and no raised hands. And then if we could go back and just formally say the ex parte part.
Oh, there are. I'm formally saying there are no ex parte communications. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I will close public comment and we'll move to the consent calendar. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I will entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
I have a motion by Member Pats, a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And it is 7:52 PM, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting. And Sherri, let me know when you're ready for the regular meeting.
Okay, we're ready.
All right. It is 7:52 PM. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Emeryville City Council. I apologize. The screen is frozen, and I'm trying to scroll down. Bear with me one moment. Do we need to call the roll again, Sherri?
No, we're okay.
And I'm okay with the introductory remarks as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll move us to, oh, boy, sorry, now it's over scrolling. But I believe we're at approval of the final agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
A second.
I have a motion by Member Pats and a second by Member Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And I apologize. My computer is freezing. Would someone let me know what the next item is, please?
Special orders of the day, of which we have none.
Yep, no special orders of the day.
And then announcement of commission and committee vacancies, which I can go ahead and read at this time.
Please go ahead.
All right. As the council, I believe, knows, we are currently recruiting for our annual committee appointments. We have a wide variety of positions that are opening up across all of our community advisory committees. Applications are due May 17 by 5:00 PM, and they, your application can be filled out and submitted online. The appointments to the committees and commissions will, are scheduled for a special city council meeting that will happen on June 15. So for more information and to apply, you can just go to our website. And the URL would be www.emeriville.org/advisorybodies. And you should be able to find everything you need there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have councilmember special announcements and reports on meetings attended. Does anyone have anything worthy of sharing? Member Bowers? Remember Donahue?
I attended a East Bay League of Cities meeting where a presentation was given by, I think his name is Larry Cosman, about how cities are changing in rezoning their commercial and retail districts into residential districts, and ways that cities can do this rezoning and making basically business improvement districts as a way to monetize and get future income in a regular way to cities. And I thought it was an interesting direction. He talked specifically about all the empty parking lots that could really be utilized and upzoned, and that cities, if they rezone, could benefit economically in a consistent way, and it would help replace some of the lost retail income that cities have. And he also promoted something that he thinks the state will get involved in, which is reducing or eliminating easements that current owners of parking lots seem to retain for the long haul. And he thinks that this will occur at the state level, that this, there'll be a change. And so that'll make even more parking lots available for rezoning.
Great. I look forward to your input on our housing element as we approach that. Member Bowers?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three announcements. First, which I'm sure you'll speak more of, I just wanted to send my appreciation to Pedro and Rebecca and the community services staff for the Easter Hip Hop With It Bunny Easter egg event, something like that. You know, I just, it was really well done. It's good to have community events come back. So I just want to thank them for that. Second, I just wanted to update folks that the Alameda County Transportation Commission with the quick bill grants we applied for last summer, or I'm sorry, last fall, to do the Doyle Street improvements that we did. The chair of the commission, Mayor Cutter of San Leandro, has decided in the communications strategy for the year to highlight the best projects, and Emeryville's is being highlighted first. So there was videography done. I joined Mayor Cutter. She and ACTC staff filmed on the Doyle Street bikeway this past week, and expect that video to come out later this month. So we'll share that. That'll be a good spotlight for the city, using money really well, really quickly. The commission really loved it. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a brief update on the status of the bill we're sponsoring, Senate Bill 591, related to intergenerational housing. The bill, I know Councilmember Medina will know what I'm saying, this bill was triple referred to committee. She's laughing. Yeah, I've never had to work on a triple referred bill. It was referred to Human Services, Housing, and Judiciary Committees. And she's laughing, and it's not appropriate, because I met with all of those committees this past week in order to get this bill done. I will say that there is broad support for the bill, and we are reconciling all the different preferences of the different committees on structure and language. And I have a draft in my inbox right now. And so hopefully, we will have this bill out of the first house by the end of April. So at the first meeting in May, I'll report back on that. But so far, prognosis is good for intergenerational housing in Emeryville.
Thank you, Member Bowers. Anyone else? Anything to report? I would like to jump in and thank our Community Services Department for a really great event this past weekend. I know my family was really grateful to participate in serving the community, and just seeing everyone's faces. And the staff member who was in the bunny outfit took their responsibilities very seriously. So I just want to let folks know, we have very serious characters. I also wanted to bring up that on April 17, where we're working with Public Market again on another drive-in movie, this time it's going to be Toy Story 4. And you can go to emeryville.org, and we've got a link to the registration on the splash page. And then also, I know, Member Pats, is one of your favorite days of the year, and one of my favorite days of the year is coming up, which is the Emeryville's annual bulky spring cleanup on April 12th and 13th. So just like, check your calendar. And then also go to Waste Management's website to see what you can put out, because they're not going to take everything. But they, you know, they have rules about how they want you to set it out. But it's a, it's a great time for spring cleaning. So that, we'll return to the regular agenda. Is there a city manager's report tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You hit it all. Just seconding, or, you know, the appreciation for our community services staff, just wanted a little statistic on that. We had over 80 cars go through the bunny hop. So, and that doesn't count all the bicycles and other folks. So, yeah.
The cargo bikes were the highlight.
150 kids signed up. So thank you for your support.
All right, that takes us to ex parte communications. Does anyone have anything to report for this meeting? Okay, seeing none. That'll take us to public comment.
Did Councilmember Bowers raise his hand?
I apologize. I missed.
That's okay. I was a little slow with the draw. I just, I've met with members of the staff of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District regarding what I believe is item 12.2, the crematorium issue.
Very good. Thank you for reporting that. Well, that'll take us to item nine, which is public comment for consent agenda items and items not on the agenda. Now's the time for public comment. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. And at this time, I will ask our city clerk if anyone has submitted electronic comments, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
No, I have no online speaker card submitted, and no raised hands among the entire staff attendees.
Okay, and I can see into the attendee pool, and I see none either. So I will, at this time, I will close public comment. And I'll turn to the consent calendar. Colleagues, do you have any questions or anything that you need to pull? Member Medina?
Yes. Can we please pull item 10.8, as I'll need to recuse myself from that item?
Would you like to make a motion excluding item 10.8?
Yeah, I'd like to move the consent calendar excluding item 10.8.
Okay, so I will second that. And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And so does Member Medina need to leave the room just for this vote?
I'm going to demote her.
Can you put her in the waiting room?
Yes.
I think I need to say, this time, I don't want to screw it up, that I need to recuse myself due to a possible, potential economic conflict of interest. Now I'm going to be.
Now you're getting put in the waiting room.
I'm going to change you to an attendee, so you'll be like a member of the public, and then we'll bring you back.
And I will go ahead and move item 10.8. Do I have a second?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, motion for myself, second for Member Bowers. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina has recused herself. Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And let's bring Member Medina back in.
Get her back. And there is part of her.
There she is. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go on to action items. The first is 12.1, and this is for our next audit.
Do we have a presentation from our finance director, Mr. Farmer, if you would like to get, receive that presentation?
Do folks need a presentation? Or will we waive presentation tonight? This is regular business, where we're going to approve or not approve a contract for our next audit, which is a process that we are all familiar with. But we're welcome to have a presentation if folks want it.
Just Madam Mayor, I would observe this is the first time in 16 years that the Emeryville City Council has had the opportunity to consider an auditor that is different than the one that the city's used for quite a while.
Yes. And I think that's something to note, for sure. But whether, do folks want a presentation? I don't need one myself. So, anyone else? Okay, Brad, thank you for hanging in with us for questions, but we're going to go ahead and waive presentation. Does anyone have any clarifying questions before I go to public comment? Seeing none, I will check back in with our city clerk to see if anyone has submitted electronic comment, or if anyone's hand is raised. And I am not seeing any raised hands.
No, and we have no online submissions either.
Very good. I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Does anyone have anything they'd like to discuss before we go ahead and take a motion? Member Bowers?
I'd just like, as you as well, Madam Mayor, the Budget Governance Committee received an extremely thorough presentation, and I want to thank Mr. Farmer and Christine and Peggy Sue for their work in preparing this. It's very uncommon to have 16 years with the same auditor. Traditionally, that is, I believe, Mr. Farmer will correct me if I'm wrong, three to five years is considered normal. And so this is just the city taking another one of our best practices forward with finance and budget stuff. And I strongly support the recommendation of staff, and I appreciate the diligence they did in reaching that conclusion. I'll be happy to move the item.
Thank you. And I would be happy to second, and I'll second all of your comments. And it's, you know, the city has received awards for our audits in the past, and I expect that we'll continue to do so, but it's still good practice to leave no stone unturned. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez.
Aye. And then now we're on to item 12.2. This is a discussion on prohibiting crematories in Emeryville. Mrs. Charlie is joining us. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. My computer just crashed, so I'm doing this by my phone. So I don't have the agenda item up in front of me as I did a few minutes ago. So I apologize for that. But I think I can do this from memory. I don't have a formal presentation prepared for you tonight on this item. We did provide a staff report that gives background information as requested by the council at your February 2 meeting. I'd be happy to walk through that report if you wish, or I'm available to respond to any questions you may have.
Does anyone have a desire to walk through the report, or any specific questions for Mr. Bryant? Mr. Bowers?
Thanks, Charlie. My only questions are just to clarify, the two properties that you identified, one on Yerba Buena and the other on Horton Street, could you just clarify? I understand that we're looking generally at base zones and changing conditionally-used permit status for crematories in these two zones, and that there's still this opportunity for funeral homes, mortuaries, and mausoleums. But as it relates to these two specific properties, do they, do they currently have permits to operate as crematories, or would they be allowed to in the future operate as crematories if we chose at this time to preclude that specific use?
They are two different situations. The one on Horton Street was never permitted because it's my understanding that it came into existence before we had a zoning requirement for any kind of a use permit. So they were grandfathered in. However, it's our understanding that they have ceased crematory operations several years ago, and therefore they no longer have a legal non-conforming status to operate a crematory. So they could no longer come back as a crematorium. The one on Yerba Buena Avenue got a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission, I believe it was in 1992. And so under the planning regulations, they are considered a conforming use. Anything that received an entitlement to operate prior to the current planning regulations being adopted and that has not expired is allowed to continue under that original permit. So it's a conforming use, even though a crematorium wouldn't be allowed in that location today. And the one on Horton Street was legal non-conforming, but it has now lost that status.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other question is, as it relates to mausoleums and funeral homes, places that receive bodies, just, do you have a recommendation about what else could be included in that category that we should, that might, it feels like there's a crossover space, right, a little bit between them and crematoriums, just the way that category is defined? And I was just wondering if we have any properties that, other than the two that you've mentioned, that use those other, that fall into that other category right now?
Right. There are none that I am aware of. Crematories didn't used to be a separate use classification. It just fell under the general kind of funeral home category. It now is a separate classification. But to my knowledge, there are no other funeral home type businesses in Emeryville, other than these two crematoria.
Okay, and then I lied. I have one last question, which is, do you have a, do you have a policy position or preference about adding funeral homes to a list of prohibited land uses? Is there a reason why you would recommend an urban core city like ours should keep them as a land use?
Well, I think there is probably a need for funeral homes. People die, and they need to be, and their remains need to be tended to. So, you know, I think people who lose loved ones would probably not want to see that business disappear entirely. Although, again, it's kind of a moot point for Emeryville, because to my knowledge, we've never had any, other than these two crematoria.
Okay, no more questions. Thank you.
Member Medina?
Do crematoriums pay particularly high amount of tax, property taxes?
I don't know the answer to that. I haven't looked up their property taxes, but I, it's, you know, based on assessed valuation. So I don't know that their assessed valuation would be particularly different from any other business.
I'm just asking because I would assume they have heavy industrial equipment, and I know that garners a higher assessed valuation.
Did Brad have a comment to make?
Brad?
Thank you. Councilmember Medina, they're going to pay the same rate as any other industrial taxpayer, as far as property tax and the business property tax. It's not going to be extremely high, because it's relatively low cost for a furnace. So that really should not play into the factor from that standpoint, in my opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Charlie, would the following business, it was sort of the original idea of the Neptune Society, which is burial at sea, full body burial at sea, would that be precluded from happening in Emeryville with this? Or could full burial at sea still happen?
To clarify, do you mean would they light it on fire, or just drop it in the ocean?
Just drop it in the ocean, meaning.
Okay.
You know, this is a much greener approach than burning bodies. So would, would that business be controlled in Emeryville? Could we take bodies in biodegradable bags out to our sailboats and then sail out to sea, sort of like they do in Southern California? There's a company, Torrance, that has a full body burial at sea. Could this happen in our city?
Well, I think that that type of use, if it doesn't involve cremation, would be classified as a funeral-type business. as a funeral-type business, and it would be allowed in certain locations with a conditional use permit. I would note, I didn't mention this before, but it is mentioned in the staff report, that funeral homes, as well as crematories, are both classified as uses of special concern, which means that they can never be approved at a staff level, they always have to be approved by the Planning Commission. So, such a business, if it were conditionally permitted at whatever location that they wanted to be at, would require approval of the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
That was a really good question, Scott. I bet BCDC would have more to say about it than we would, because, you know, if you take someone out into the open ocean, that's one thing, but the bay, it's a lot of rules. I have one question for Charlie, I'm just wondering the conditional use permit for like interment services, if there's an expiration date on that, or if they can operate ad infinitum under their current process?
Yes, the latter. Planning entitlements run with the land in perpetuity, they don't expire, so once, whoops, sorry.
Your computer's backed up, we can hear.
Yeah, I have to close that.
Okay, I see one, okay. Can we unmute Charlie? He's in the attendees list now, there he is.
Okay, I'm muted again, I'm sorry about these technological glitches. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot what the question was.
You were talking about how the conditional use runs with the land?
Oh, yes, that's right, thank you. Conditional use permit runs with the land in perpetuity, so unless it's revoked, which is an onerous process, the use permit would be valid forever, basically.
Okay, very good, all right. Does that conclude our questions, colleagues? I think we're done with questions, so I'm going to just check in with the public and see if there are any electronic comments submitted. I don't see any hands raised, but I'll check with the city clerk.
No comments submitted.
Okay, thank you, I'll close the public comment section of this item and bring it back for discussion. I'd like to start with the member Bowers, as our resident member or representative for BACMID, just to talk generally about this item.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I referred this item to the city council, and I appreciate everyone having the discussion and Charlie for the really good information. So, we'd have one potentially property at the very edge of the city that would be a pre-existing non-conforming use that would be grandfathered in. So, contextually, there are...
May I clarify that? If you're referring to the Pacific Interment, they're not legal non-conforming. Yes, they are conforming. They have a valid condition.
Thank you, I apologize, thank you for clarifying that, Charlie. So, the 92 permit, they're conforming, thank you. Yeah, so we'd have one entity eligible to operate. In terms of just urban land use, while this is already, as Charlie noted, a, something that has to come before the council for discretionary approval, it's a special classification, it wouldn't just be administratively approved, I think it would be a good idea for us to just consider prohibiting this. I'm not usually somebody who's all for like prohibiting a land use blanketly, but in my experience recently in this past year with the Air District, cities where this was allowed or where crematoriums could get permits, there were these spikes in activity that surpassed what is considered safe or the legal limits for cremation during executive order periods, and there is the possibility that there would be future needs to do that as well. And so, they have an impact on the surrounding communities, they're unhealthy in an urban environment, and for properties that are proximate to it, also when you burn bodies, you burn fillings that have mercury in them, you burn a bunch of things that go out into the environment at high, super high temperatures. And frankly, the advice I received from our science team at the Air District was that if your city doesn't have a prohibition on it, you should consider that, because if you get one, it can become a huge nuisance problem in a dense urban space. And so, we're not like some of the other more suburban design cities where there might be some space to put this. This is a huge problem for the crematorium in East Oakland, there's a lot of resident conflict with this on an ongoing basis, I receive a lot of complaints as the county representative to the Air District about it. So, the more I became familiar with this issue, I honestly don't have any background in this, so I'm not speaking from a place of superior knowledge, but it just felt like it was an easy thing to just take off the list. As we think about how we're building an urban environment that's family-friendly, it just doesn't seem like a good use, especially since we have several areas of our cities still zoned industrial where it was possible for someone to seek a permit like this. It just would save us the headache to just say this is an unallowable use going forward. So, I'm in favor of giving staff direction to just bring back an amendment that would allow us to make the two changes to the little boxes on the table to eliminate them as an eligible use, but if others disagree or want to talk more, I'm happy to talk about it.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
I really support what Councilmember Bowers is doing here. I just really have looked at the crematorium problems with air in Emeryville in the past, and it is really significant, what we have ingested as a result of the crematorium that we had. And so, I, you know, I just think that it's a crazy way to take our bodies and burn them, we're just adding tremendous amounts of toxins to the environment and CO2, and there's just, we're a coastal city, we could do burial at sea so well, and we should encourage that facility to. They used to do it, the Neptune Society used to do that, they should redo it and make that, and, you know, those, they could have those biodegradable bags and have celebrations out in the Pacific Ocean, and for those that really want to save greenhouse gases, the Monterey Trench is close, and there, you're not just being sort of neutral with your body CO2, you're actually sequestering your CO2 if it goes down there, because the Pacific Plate is undergirding the North American Plate there, and anything at the bottom of the Monterey Trench is sequestering CO2, and, you know, this is, I see a likely business in the future. So, I really support this change.
Any other comments? I'm in support of this as well, and I'm rethinking my desire to be cremated, because I did not think about the environmental impact, so Scott, we can have a discussion about burial at sea, maybe you have more information than I do. But it looks like we have a majority to give direction to staff to come back and take this use away from future projects. So, any further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, if I could just comment. This, of course, is an amendment to the planning regulations, so it needs to go to the Planning Commission first. We've already published the April agenda, so the first opportunity for the Planning Commission would be May, which would mean that this would come back to you in June or July with an ordinance.
Very good, thank you very much. Member Pats?
Yeah, sorry, I was slow, I'm trying to gather myself. I'm of two minds, I have recently dealt with this issue, and I've actually used a crematorium in Emeryville, as that was a mother-in-law's wishes many, many years ago, so I am familiar with their services firsthand. But I fully support this measure during the last crisis, the issue in LA and the air quality management and all of that is there. And then, of course, I have to share this because it's how my mind works, I'm still stuck on burial at sea here in Emeryville, and I'm just envisioning a giant slide from town underneath the Golden Gate Bridge till we get to it's officially the sea. You know, we can catch a little of the current on the way, so I, this is why my hand didn't go up quickly, but I do support this, so thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it. All right, so I think we can move on to item 3.1. This is approval by the city council/disaster council of the city of Emeryville, authorizing the April 1st, 2021 through June 3rd, 2021 CERT Academy training. Is there a presentation?
Our presentation by me, Madam Mayor. This, as you recall, in 2019, the council prioritized emergency preparedness, and as part of that, we re-energized the community emergency response teams, otherwise affectionately known as CERT. After completing this CERT Academy in 2019, we had 15 people who were able to register as disaster service workers, who can then help out their neighbors and the community in the event of an emergency or disaster. The next CERT training that the city of Emeryville is sponsoring is starting this month. Graduates of that program will be eligible to become disaster service workers. However, the California Emergency Services Act requires the accredited disaster council, which in Emeryville's case is UOL, to authorize the training of disaster service workers. So, the item before you tonight is requesting your authorization of this next CERT Academy, so that the graduates, if they so choose, can register as disaster service workers with our city. Happy to answer any questions.
Very good, are there any questions, colleagues? Nope, okay, seeing no questions, we'll check in with our city clerk to see if there are any electronic comments or any hands raised.
No, I have no comments, or hands raised at this time.
Thank you, I'll close the public comment portion of this item. We'll bring it back if there's any discussion, let's go ahead and do that, otherwise, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve the authorization of the CERT training.
So, moved.
I'll second, and I did want to note that I thought the flyer was really nice.
That's our good friends at ACFD.
So, we have a motion by Member Pats and a second by Member Medina, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
And Mayor Martinez?
Aye, and that takes us to department head reports. Do we still have Charlie on the line? I think he's in...
Put him away, but I'll bring him back.
Bring him back!
Thank you for allowing me to come back. This, Mayor Martinez and members of the city council, this is my monthly report to you on the recent activities of the Planning Commission. Their last meeting was on March 25th. It's not listed on your agenda, but the first thing that was done at that meeting was the swearing-in of our two new commissioners, Henry Simons and Erica Zepko, by the city clerk, so we now have a full complement of seven planning commissioners, and I want to thank you very much for that. All seven commissioners were present at the meeting. As you can see, there were two items on their agenda. First was a public hearing on the 6613 Hollis Cannabis Manufacturing and Non-Storefront Dispensary Incubator Facility Amendment, which was basically the conversion of the second floor of the Rotten City Pizza Building to cannabis manufacturing use. The commission unanimously approved this application, and they included a condition of approval that the sidewalk improvements along 66th Street are to start within three years. The commission then held a study session on the 3637 Adeline Supportive Housing Project. This project is similar to the one at 3600 San Pablo, it's a 90-unit, 7-story, 100% affordable project being processed under SB 35 and AB 1763, which means it is administrative, ministerial approval. The applicant, however, requested a study session before the Planning Commission, so they held that study session, and they offered their comments on the project. And that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions on this report?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, on 6613 Hollis, there is a 14, 15-day appeal period on that to the city council, and this, of course, is your opportunity to appeal that item to yourselves if you wish to do so.
Thank you, any comments, questions, or appeals on this report? Nope, seeing none, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to future agenda item requests from council members, does anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward? Member Pats?
Yeah, I have two items that I want to bring forward, and I'll try to be brief here, because I think we're almost at nine o'clock, the witching hour, so. The first one is, if the census is ever released, and that data comes out, we will be in the middle of redistricting for the county seats, and there's a movement in the South County to sort of shuffle the boundaries in an equitable way, and so they are asking for a letter of support, and there'll be a whole packet of information, and we have discussion on it, so I'm just asking to have that conversation. I've already talked to the city manager about this, but I just have an item of letter of support for making sure that redistricting for the county seats is equitable.
And I'm in support of this, Councilmember Pats has shared the materials with me as well, and I'd like to see this come forward, all right?
It's not five thumbs, but I would say this came from Sarah Lamnan to put some, another name on it. And then, finally, I think we need to revisit our noise waiver process, and so I would like to ask that we do that. I just feel like we get a lot of noise waivers, and there's not a lot of checks and balances on that, so I'd like to get a sense if my reading on that is correct, that we get a lot of them. And I think we did this once before, where we sort of had staff report out how many were rejected before they even came to us, but I would really love to see the two things happen here, get some really clear reporting out from Mr. Bryant on the number of requests and how often they're approved, and then, based on that information, if we want to revisit what our current policy is. So, that's my suggestion.
Would you be okay with an information item on consent calendar, and then if we decide, based on the information we receive, if we need to have a full discussion about it? Or is this, or is this something that's timely for you?
I think I've heard from members of the community who want us to look at this, and I think that for me, I really, because we've sort of kicked this can down the road a couple of times, I think it's, I think it is timely. You know, if everybody else prefers just to get the data and then go from there, that's fine, but I really think we probably will want to take some action, so.
Member Bowers?
I just wanted to ask you, Madam Mayor, like, what did you mean by a consent item? Like, as opposed to us getting an information report, like, if he wants an item on the agenda for us to have a presentation and discuss it versus...
So, that would take away the presentation, it would just be, we would just be receiving a report from staff, and it would be made available to the public, and we'd be able to look at raw numbers, but if there's a need for a discussion, and I trust Member Pats' instinct, if he's heard from the amount, you know, a lot of folks have reached out to him and let him know that, you know, this process isn't...
I didn't say it, I just said some.
Enough, if enough folks for him to bring it up as an agenda item, then I'm satisfied that it can come forward. I just wanted to bring that up, because, you know, sometimes I want a report from staff, and it doesn't necessarily rise to the level of a discussion, so.
And again, I'll throw it out to my colleagues, do they want a discussion, they want a consent item? You know, I'm fine getting a consensus from people.
Can I offer a solution? I'm supportive of him, his request, and the appropriateness of how to deliver it. Can we, if we all support it, can we just ask him to work with the city manager to determine the best way to present it?
That sounds great.
If that's okay with Member Pats, I mean, I support whatever you want to do, it's on me.
That sounds great to me, I think it's, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, and those are my items.
Very good, thank you. Does anyone else have items that they'd like to bring forward? Member Medina?
I would like to have us discuss supporting Assembly Bill 1238, the Freedom to Walk Act, which would decriminalize jaywalking. To be clear, it doesn't allow you to free yourself in front of the vehicle, it just decriminalizes and reduces certain types of profiling. Yeah, two thumbs from John, which doesn't count, okay, there we go.
Very good, anyone else? Scott, do you have an item, or are you just giving your thumbs up? Okay, I have a few. I apologize for letting them build up like this, I won't do that again. The first is, I just wanted to bring back the Commission on Aging Recommendation to Honor Nora Davis, and I apologize... recommendation to honor Nora Davis, and I apologize, I would have done this sooner, but I actually wasn't there when they voted. Um, I had my, the call dropped off, so um, I do want to bring that back and make sure the council hears that recommendation, and I think we'll be able to um, to um, move forward with that. Um, the second is an anti-hate resolution in response to the rising violence against the AAPI community, um, which you've probably been seeing in um, other cities, and I believe the county's passed one as well. Um, I'm sorry, let's do the Nora Davis one first, did I get, did I ask for a thumbs up on that? Is everyone okay with bringing that forward? Nor, honoring Nora Davis, taking the Commission on Aging recommendation.
Well, what, when you say taking the recommendation, like adopting it, or like discussing it?
Discussing it.
This is, if I could just, um, this is, the Commission on Aging took an action that staff has not advanced forward to the council, so that we would be scheduling the action that the commission took, is that right?
Yes.
Mayor? Yeah.
Yes.
What was the action before I vote to bring it forward?
It, it will come forward to you in any event, because the commission made a recommendation that staff needed to bring-
Oh, I see, okay, I was like, what are we doing, okay.
Do you want me to tell you what it is? Just where you have preview? It's um, they, Nora's family asked that a day of service be named in her honor. Um, and specifically, it was brought up that a cleanup would be appropriate. And then secondarily, they said that a plaque um, could be placed, and I believe um, there was, there's an area mentioned, but I believe it was near Pelleto Park. But primarily, it was the day of service. So um, the second uh, item was the anti-hate resolution in response to rising violence against the AAPI community. Thumbs up? Okay, thank you. And then the last one is um, the heaviest. It's uh, the mayor's monarch pledge, so we can discuss some low-hanging fruit on preserving our monarch butterflies um, in the community, so. We've got support for all three of those, and I appreciate um, uh, my colleagues entertaining that, thank you very much. Does anyone else have anything to bring to a future meeting? No, looks like we're done. So, the time is 8:36 PM, and I can call this meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.